Welcome everyone to the Remote Commission Work Session of June 21, 2021. The Port of Olympia is working diligently to address the threat posed by COVID-19 to Thurston County, the State of Washington and the United States. On March 16, 2020, the Commission adopted Resolution 2020-03 authorizing certain emergency powers and light of the COVID-19 outbreak, including invoking applicable emergency exemptions to meeting notice requirements and location restrictions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Pursuant to that resolution, the Port of Olympia Commission is conducting today's meeting remotely. The report is following the guidance of the Thurston County Health Department to take all efforts to prevent the spread of this virus as acting in the interest of the safety and welfare of the public, the community, and our employees to limit its spread. So with that, welcome everybody. Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved, I do, I would like to ask a question. Is there, since we have Mall Foster Longi as the last item, are they going to be on the call right away or are they expected to come in later? I would like to move that up to first, but I don't know if that messes up the schedule. So I'll have to leave that up to Executive Director Sam if she knows. I mean, if they're on there and they were are willing to go ahead first, then perhaps we should let them get in because it is a long presentation.
Right, we did have them scheduled to come in a little bit later. I don't know Tracy whether they're all in the the waiting room or not and ready to go, but we did.
I do have Lisa Parks is here and so is. That's it right now. Sorry.
Okay, so then there are other principals not here yet, so.
Okay, then I would move approval of the agenda as presented with perhaps moving Mall Foster Longi in as they both show up during. So if they don't come in as number one or two, then they'll closely follow just so we can get them in and make their presentation if that's okay with the rest of the commission. So that's my motion.
Second the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded to accept the agenda with the
Provision.
Except provision of putting in Mall Foster Longi after item one, item two, assuming they show up at that time. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, Agenda One, what? Okay, Agenda One, upcoming topics and agenda items, 10 minutes, Sam Gibbene.
Great, thank you. Let that PowerPoint come in and I will definitely keep things moving along because we do have a very full agenda. And Tracy, if you can text me or something as if the principles of Mall Foster and Longi become available. Okay, you can go to the next slide, please. Coming up on June 28th, we have the Resolution 2021-03 Commission Code of Conduct and Ethics. It's actually the Code of Governance and Conduct. And that is coming back to you as I believe that is for action, actually, that I think that this should have been changed. And then we have a few capital projects that need the Commission's final acceptance. As you recall, this is something that is a little bit different about ports. And so they have, these projects have been completed and closed out and are ready to come to you for this step for final acceptance. Next slide. On, that is actually Tuesday, July 6th, and that will, sorry for that typo. We'll have the West Bay Yard Development, a briefing that's been requested. Also have an update on the ferry and an extended mortgage agreement and some other actions that are happening aboard the vessel. I am hoping to confirm that the lot master planning and can be presented with representatives from lot. As always, these upcoming topics, these are always a draft document and things are always changing and I hope to confirm that they will be available for that date as well as I want to come back to you with some follow up on possibilities for having an on-call parliamentarian. Next slide. For July 12th, we have that resolution for a commission. Again, I think that's coming back to you for action. So I think that that needs to be changed. I apologize for that. We do have our ILW Local 47A contract will be coming to you as an action other for ratification.
Why is that coming as action other, Sam?
I think primarily because all the terms will be agreed to at the staff level as is our policy. And then it is a ratification process. We will be, we will be past the contract term. We continue to operate, but it's basically a one-step process. So it's coming to you for just ratification. Okay. This is just showing you that we continue to make strides towards scheduling the topics. All of these have been scheduled or as they have been blocked out that you have already seen them, such as the Tribal Honor Statement. We do have that West Bay Yard coming up, but we have these all on the schedule for later this summer. Next slide. Then adding for the other topics we have in the queue, that lot property needs, again, that's what we're hoping to schedule for July 6th. So that might come off the list. We do hope to give you an update on the Bud Inlet Remedial Investigation and Action Planning, Communication, Marketing and Outreach Analytics Report, the Crane Analysis. I am a bit uncertain as to whether or not we're actually coming back. There was a different, two different opinions that were expressed. And so we don't have a motion that has been approved by that. Some type of a briefing on the port's IT system. And then we are hoping to bring together back the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy sometime later this summer. Next slide. Then that's it.
Go back one slide, Sam, please.
Oh, Tracy. Tracy, are you pulling that up?
Thank you. I think we had the crane analysis in 2020 and I don't think we need further crane analysis. I think you know, where it's at today is, you know, from the standpoint of the Commission, you know, do we keep the crane or sell the crane? And I personally am not bringing anything forth. So I think that that, you know, I asked my fellow Commissioners, is that crane analysis? Is that misnamed or is it really, should it be on a work session agenda topic list? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Zeta, go ahead.
So we have the crane analysis and we did not discuss, we did not finish our discussion about what to do with it. I move that we add to a work session soon a commission discussion about what sort of action to consider in response to the crane analysis.
So it's been moved to add the crane analysis to a future work session item. Is there a second?
Just to be clear, Commissioner Downing, I move that we add a discussion about what to do about the crane analysis.
Thank you, Commissioner. So it's been moved that we add a discussion about what to do about the crane analysis to a future work session. Is there a second?
I will second it only for the purpose of discussion because I think this can be a short discussion today. So I'll second it for discussion.
I think Commissioner McGregor, I think you have some discussion.
Yeah, I, the only reason I did that is because, you know, we had that crane analysis, as you pointed out. We know, A, that we can't, even if we sell the crane, the monies that we would collect from it can't go back against the debt that we owe on it. The bonding that we took out on it. So therefore, selling it doesn't really do anything except to show the difference between what is left on the financing of it versus what we sell it for. And I think that it's pretty well a mute point at this point of what we do with that at the crane. I mean, it doesn't, other than what it's costing us, it's still going to cost us even if we got rid of it. So I think that I'm fine removing that from the list of things we need to talk about.
Commissioner Zeta, please.
So even if we are not able to directly deface the debt on the crane itself, selling the crane would help the port because we are not using it enough as the analysis showed to recover any kind of benefit from our investment. The analysis showed is, I'm sure you recall that we need to use it over 1,000 hours per year in order to break even. And we typically use it less than 20 hours per year. So we're losing a lot of money on the crane. If we could sell it, we would at least get something back. Unfortunately, we will continue to be saddled with debt. But meanwhile, we're saddled with a big expensive piece of equipment that is taking up space, costing maintenance, and not paying its way. So this is something that we should discuss. This is what I propose, that we discuss options.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we put a discussion of the crane analysis on a future work session agenda item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say no. No.
No.
I call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes.
Thank you. So it looks like you can take that off your list based on that vote, Sam. I just wanted to draw attention to that and the fact that it's not a priority for the majority of the Commission at this time. So thank you. Any other questions about Sam's upcoming topics and agenda items before we move on?
Yes, there were quite a few changes from this, between this presentation and the packet that was online today. I request that the changes be updated and provided to the public and the Commission. I move that the changes be updated and provided to the public and the Commission. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Zeta. I'm not sure if you're talking about the present or the difference between today's slides and the packet. Sorry, could you make that clear for me?
That's exactly what I'm talking about. The presentation is different from the packet that was online an hour ago.
I see. So it's been moved that been moved that and seconded that the packet be revised to reflect the slides as they exist in this today's presentation. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passes. Okay, let's move on to the, is Mall Foster Longi or the three principals present at this time?
Commissioners, if I might, we have a very, very hard stop obligation for Jerry Sevier. And so she needs to make her presentation at this time so she can meet another obligation for that. So we.
Okay, I support that. You know, sometimes I don't think as fast as my fellow Commissioners. I mean, I think there's a reason why we put these agendas together in a certain order. And that's kind of within the realm of the Executive Director to put it together in the proper order. So I'm happy to stick to the existing agenda, at least for Juneteenth.
Yep.
Okay, Jerry, you're up.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. My presentation is pretty quick, so we should be done soon. Next slide, please. I'm here to, this afternoon to talk to you about Juneteenth, which we mentioned at a previous meeting a few weeks ago. A little bit of background, we have a policy 312 that lists the port holidays. And in there, the, in that policy, the holidays are stated as the legal holidays that are observed by the Port of Olympia. They happen to be the same holidays that are listed in the RCW that are observed by the State of Washington. But our policy doesn't necessarily reference that RCW. And this past legislative session, Governor Jay Inslee declared Juneteenth as a paid state holiday by signing House Bill 1016 into law, making June 19th a paid day off for state workers effective January 2022. So next year, next slide, please. A little bit about Juneteenth, it's also known as Emancipation Day and Freedom Day, which marks the day when the Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas in 1865 and informed the last enslaved African Americans that they were free. Juneteenth is a holiday that celebrates the emancipation of those who have been enslaved in the United States. Washington is one of 47 states that recognized Juneteenth as a holiday, but it was previously not a paid day off. So this year, the governor signed a bill that makes it a paid day off. Texas was the first state to officially recognize Juneteenth as a holiday back in 1980, and Washington did so in 2007. Next slide, please. So port policy has followed the state government holidays traditionally. And as I mentioned, our policy doesn't specifically indicate or reference that RCW. So our port policy would need to be updated to include that additional holiday if the Commission wanted to also recognize the holiday of June 19th as a paid port holiday starting in 2022. And our policy doesn't reference the RCW on purpose. I think at a previous meeting, I said, maybe we could just do that to avoid this. But after some more research on that, next slide, please. It gives, that RCW also gives state employees an additional paid holiday of their choice. And the port does not have that in our policy because we built it into our leave system already. So if we were to, you know, reference that RCW, we'd be giving him another holiday, which we don't necessarily want to do. So I just wanted to give you information of the impact of making that of Juneteenth a paid holiday. The loaded cost to the Port of Olympia is approximately $20,000 annually. Next slide, please. So staff is recommending that the Commission formally adopt Juneteenth as a Port of Olympia paid holiday to celebrate the resiliency and spirit of Black Americans, reminding us of our country's past moral failures alongside the persistent hope for a more equitable future. And those are in the words of Governor Jay Inslee. The Commission can direct staff by motion to change the port policy 312. And that, that new policy would reflect that paid holiday. We can bring that back to the Commission for approval at a later date if the Commission, though, wishes to do so. Next slide. And that's all I have on that. Any questions by Commissioners?
Thank you, Jerry. Commissioner Zeta or Commissioner McGregor, any questions?
No, I just had a, I just want to make sure what I heard. One of the questions I had, but I had it answered when I looked at the policy and that had to do, what if it falls on a Saturday, which it did this year, just as an example, we would have had Friday would have been the declared day as the holiday. And then again, on Sunday, it would have been the following Monday. So that took care of that answer. Once I read that part of it, the only other thing I had was, so we could recommend that we change the policy and then have you bring it back to us at a fairly, I mean, within a couple of meetings or even shorter than that for action. So I guess my fellow Commissioners, do we want to do this in advisory and then bring it back as an action, which is our normal course? Or do we want to put it on the agenda as an action other when staff is ready to move it forward? I think it's important enough. It doesn't take place until 2022, but I think we should move forward with that. So that's, that's my discussion on it. So thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner McGregor. Commissioner Zeta, anything?
I move that the Commission formally adopt Juneteenth as a Port of Olympia paid holiday to celebrate the resiliency and spirit of Black Americans, reminding us of our country's moral past failures alongside a persistent hope for a more equitable future.
Yeah, point of order, Commissioner Zeta. We typically don't take action at work sessions. And so, yeah, I think, you know, Commissioner McGregor is talking about an action other at a future commission meeting. You're talking about immediate action and I'm talking about, since we have until next year, let's have an advisory and then we have an action item two weeks later. So so Commissioner Zeta, I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask for a second because I think that, you know, we don't take action, formal action at work session. So you're, I think you're a little premature on that. I appreciate your sentiment, however.
Please record the motion and the refusal to act in the minutes.
So two things, Jerry, I had questions about. Now, one is, so apparently our President, President Biden apparently signed legislation on Friday or Thursday night this past week and creating the federal holiday immediately. Is that true?
Yes, that did happen and it's been a state holiday for, like I said, since 2007. So now it's just a federal holiday, but that doesn't mean it's a paid holiday. So there's a difference between it being a holiday versus a paid holiday. And again, the state has had this as a holiday since 2007. And now it's a federal holiday, but it doesn't mean it's paid. So this would be actually recognizing it as a paid holiday instead of just a holiday.
Oh, I see. Thank you. So is the intent of the federal government to make it a paid holiday similar to Martin Luther King and President's Day and so on? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think unless you work for the federal government, it's, that only applies to federal government workers. So it still would be, we would follow the state rules and not, and in this case, the port policy.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and for your recommendation, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. I look forward to seeing this at a future commission meeting.
Okay.
So, so Commissioner McGregor.
I was just going to ask, so what I recommended is that we ask staff to bring it back to a commission meeting with the resolution change so that we can have, take action or action or take advisory or action in two meetings? Or do we want to do it in an action other basis in one meeting and take it off the table?
Well, Commissioner McGregor, as I said, you know, I think we have a year to get this or, you know, several months to get this done. So I'm happy to have an advisory and then an action item two weeks later. But you're free to, when the subject comes up at our next commission meeting, if it shows up at an advisory and you'd like to move it to action other, I think you can make a motion at that time. That'd be great.
Have this item as an action other at the next meeting.
Okay, so it's been moved to put this as the action other item at the very next commission meeting. Is there a second for purposes of discussion?
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded that we put this as the action other item at the next meeting. But now we have discussion and I see our Executive Director would like to speak.
Yes, again, to remind the Commission that the Rules Resolution that you just passed recently says that Commissioners will refrain from scheduling topics and leave that up to the Executive Director and the President of the Commission to do.
Thank you, Sam.
I revise my motion and move that we add this as action other at the next possible, at the very next possible meeting.
Okay, so it's been moved that the person making the motion has revised their, Commissioner, excuse me, making the motion has revised it to say that we take this Juneteenth holiday item and put it as an action other item at the very next possible commission meeting. Is there a second?
I'll pull back my original second and second this motion.
So it's been moved and seconded that we take the Juneteenth holiday approval and put it as an action other item at the very next possible commission meeting. Is there a discussion? And I saw a hand or two. Jerry, please.
Oh, I was just going to say that I am on vacation for the next meeting, so I can work with Sam on getting that at a future meeting. But the next meeting, which the packet goes out tomorrow, so it would be a little hard to get it ready, but, and I won't be there, but.
And how about you, Sam? Did you have discussion? But my discussion is I'd like to reiterate what our Executive Director said that scheduling of individual items on commission meetings is done in concert with the President of the Port Commission and the Executive Director. But if my fellow Commissioners want to override that, what's written in the resolution. I think that a motion is a motion, a second is a second. So.
Commissioner Downing, you will recall that the motion was amended so as not to override that policy. So we're not overriding the policy. Motion's been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, I call for the question.
Point of order. Okay, very good. Let me just restate, see if I got it right. It's been moved and seconded that the Juneteenth holiday discussion happened as an action other item at a future commission meeting. Is that accurate?
Not discussion, but approval.
So it's been moved and seconded that approval of the Juneteenth holiday happened as an action other item at a future commission meeting.
At the very next possible meeting.
Has been moved and seconded that the Juneteenth holiday approval happened at the very next
Possible.
Possible, very next possible commission meeting.
Which leaves it open. Is that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Which leaves it open. So if Jerry is not available next time, it can be brought to the next one or, but it can be through scheduled through the Executive Director and the Commission Chair. That, that's what I'm reading that motion to say. So it leaves it up to the two of you to bring it forward when it's applicable.
Well, I just, one more comment is that we spent a lot of time talking about port process and we spent a lot of time explaining to the public what our port process is. And when it suits us, we override that port process and we push things through. I'm telling you, the next Juneteenth holiday is not for a year from now. And my two Commissioners want to say, oh yeah, we need to do an action other item for this. So I'm flabbergasted by your positions, but it's, it's been moved and seconded that the Juneteenth holiday approval for port employees happen at, as an action other item at the next possible commission meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose, please say nay, nay. Okay.
Call for a roll call in the minutes.
Okay, moving on to the next, we've gotten two down. Shall we entertain Mall Foster Longi at this time, Sam, or go on to our regular scheduled third item?
I believe that they are here and available. So Tracy, if you can move both Lisa Parks and Jim Darling over and bring up their PowerPoint, then I think we can get that portion started.
And bring up their PowerPoint, then I think we can get that portion started.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to manage too many computer screens here and get started for you. Good afternoon, everyone. We're happy to be here. Tracy, is it okay for me to share my screen? Oh, you have it on there for me. Are you gonna, well, Tracy, you'll just advance the screen, the slides for me?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, well, we are happy to be here with you today. I'm joined by my colleagues, Jim Darling, and. I don't know if John Carter is on yet. And if he is, if you could let him in, Tracy, that would be great. John is the person that's looking at the financial side of things.
I'll keep my eye out for him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so all three of us have worked extensively for port districts in Washington State, and I think it's fair to say that we all share a. A true affinity for ports and the great work that they do in our communities. We're here today to present the initial findings from our organizational assessment work that we've conducted over the past few months following our. Retreat with you earlier this year. We are gonna give you just a brief reminder of what our purpose is and what we've accomplished to date. But then the majority of our conversation today is going to be to talk about these findings from our research. And then give you some recommendations along with those findings that you may want to consider just for further. Thought and moving forward. So for the part of the conversation, the, the large part of the conversation, we've categorized our efforts into six main focus areas. So. For each of those focus areas, we'll start by providing some general observations around that area. Whether general observations, port specific or both. And then we'll follow that up with some specific findings that are related to the Port of Olympia. And then again, recommendations that you may want to think about with respect to that particular focus area. So we plan to pause briefly after each of those findings and recommendations. So if you have comments or questions, you can, we can cover those right away. But of course, our plan is to. Have time at the end of our presentation to cover any thoughts or ideas or questions that you might have as well. So. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim and he's gonna take us through the first few slides.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. And commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here today. And Tracy, did you see if John Carter was in the waiting room yet? Were you able to tell?
I have not seen him in the waiting room yet.
Well, I just was gonna have John introduce himself, but John spent a lot of time on the financials. And if you know John's background, he worked with me at the Port of Bellingham where I was executive director for a number of years. Then moved on to the city of Bellingham and then spent the later years of his career at the Port of Everett. And it was great having John on the team because. He's probably one of the leading financial people in the port industry in the state, and he's just got a sharp eye for that. So. You're getting the very best of the best in financial advice here. As, as Lisa mentioned, we, we reviewed a number of documents. We call them keystone documents because they're the important ones for a port district, like your budget, for example. We did a series of interviews. We did a few interviews outside of the organization to get, have that external perspective. And we, we had one staff workshop where we went through a number of issues and, and really to get us on the ground and, and. Sort of get our sea legs, so to speak, about the Port of Olympia. And I will tell you, we'll get into the presentation here in a second, but. I've been around the port industry now for, almost embarrassed to say, almost 30 years, working around the state. And the issues that you're wrestling with at Olympia are the very. Types of issues and the same issues that other port districts in the state wrestle with. You know, of course, everybody's got it. The wrestling matches to a different degree, but it's not uncommon. And the, the challenge we're finding with ports, and it's true of other municipal governments, particularly ports, is. The amount of internal alignment there is within the organization. And the other, and we're gonna talk about that some more in a second here. But the other thing we find is how much the, these keystone documents, like I mentioned, the budget. The comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements, your strategic plan, there's a number of keystone documents. Are really institutionalized for the organization and use because people come and go. There's, there's no doubt about it. But the institution reflects its personality, its ambitions through those keystone documents. So. I personally put a lot of emphasis on them. And they're, they're sort of the sheet of music for the orchestra to play together. And so you'll see as we go through this presentation that, that, that concept of these keystone documents will emerge. So, so what's alignment? So this business about the degree of alignment really reflects. The level of efficiency of a port or any organization. The more aligned you are, the more efficient you are, the less aligned you are, the less efficient you are. It just goes without saying. No organization is perfect, but I think it's something that everybody strives for. And then alignment, what it also means is that there's enhanced collaboration. And that means between the elected body members, between that body, that board and the, the CEO. You have an executive director, that position and the staff. And then as well as with the agency itself and the community and markets it serves. So. I, I can't over emphasize the significance that alignment or perhaps misalignment can have. On the organization. Tracy, we'll go on the next slide. So I think it's obvious what the benefits of alignment are, but it really optimizes the roles that both the elected board and the professional staff. Are able to carry out their roles and responsibilities are just more efficient in what they do. It also, the other one is that it really optimizes what are limited financial resources and staff resources. While you're still expanding capacity to do all the things that you'd like to do in your vision. Third is that I have found that the more aligned you are, the more transparent you are. And accountable you are because the organization is more open and things aren't being done on site agendas or anything like that. It's out. Front and it's an organizational alignment. Effort. Obviously constituents and customers have a better understanding clarity and they'll give you more support the more you are aligned and that, that, there's no question about that. Outside partners who might be your partners are getting grants from the state. Either private sector development partners or other government agencies. They want to be, they want to work with aligned organizations. So you increase your ability to leverage resources. And then finally, my experience has been that. In decision making, alignment has a lot to do with how decisive and forward focused you can be in making your decisions. And they also tend to be more proactive than reactive, which I think is always a good thing. So that's generally about alignment. I don't think there's anything new to the, to the commission or the staff. But hopefully it sets the stage for some future discussions. Tracy, if you could hit the next one. So I always get asked this, this business all the time, the difference between management and governance. And. I just noticed that we have a different font size for governance and management. That was not intentional. I think I just missed that in my putting the presentation together. But this is kind of modified from a Stephen Covey. Quote, but management's the efficiency in climbing the ladder to success. Governance determines if you're on the right wall or not. And very distinct roles, but very, very important roles. And. Does everybody get there? No, but this is what organizations strive for. And I think it's just a. Very straightforward and simplistic way to explain the difference. The next slide. So one thing too, is it's kind of interesting is that. Organizations that are well aligned, they really balance two things. One is their process. And these are your steps, like your, your financial guidelines. We're just talking about getting something on agenda, process that. Those are defined actions. They're sort of the operating rules of the organization. And it's what it takes to accomplish your mission. That is balanced by the culture itself, which are the primarily the underlying values and assumptions. But more, more often it's how you interact and amongst each other and the unique character environment of an organization. It's interesting, I did some work with fire districts who, a lot like port districts, volunteer fire departments. In fire districts are very much like port authorities and they're structured. And I was told by a number of fire chiefs who I thought are always very, very structured and rigid organizations. That their view of the world was the more organizational culture you had, the less process and rules you had to have. And so I'm not sure that's entirely true, but it's something for you, commission in particular, to kind of reflect on. You gotta have some of both. And in Washington, of course, the RCWs require. There's a minimum amount of processes you just have to have by law. I find ports around the state are either, can sometimes get this out of balance and they have kind of a weaker culture environment, but. They really beef up their processes. And I think over time, it doesn't happen overnight, but finding a balance between those two, I think is a. It is a characteristic of very good organizations. For the next one. So with that introduction, if there are any questions, you know, I'll do this one and then interrupt me about that. But as, as Lisa said, we've got these areas we wanted to, to review with you. I'm gonna give you some observations and there, once we took away, this is kind of what we heard, this is what we observed and looking at the documents, it's our reaction. We are, we're trying to be very polite, but at the same time, we want it, you're, I think you're paying us to be straightforward. And so we'll do that. One of the things that, that we discovered early on before we get in there is that. Your staff is very knowledgeable and they're very knowledgeable, particularly in their area of expertise, whether it's the airport or shipping terminal. And I found that to a person, by the way, that they know what they're doing. They've been in their business a while and they understand what it takes and to be successful. And the other interesting thing about Olympia is, which is not true of every port. But you have a breadth of portfolio. In other words, you've got deep water, you've got the marina, you've got the airport, you've got real estate. I guess that you're always struggling to find out what the priorities are, just kind of a healthy thing. But you're fortunate to have a wider portfolio. Some of our bigger ports in the state have a much, they have a bigger portfolio, but it's much more narrow. Particularly the big cargo ports. So Olympia really has. A very interesting. Breath of portfolio to bank on. And I think that's a good thing. You get good people that are in those operations. So that's, that's what it takes. So I am going to. Yeah. Let me go through these slides in this first area, ports, mission and purpose. And I'm gonna give you some observations and Lisa is gonna. Give you our, our sort of bottom line finding of what we would recommend. And I'm not gonna read these directly, but the first bullet point is everybody in the port industry talks about economic development. And I did it, everybody does it, but it's kind of an opaque industry concept that comes out of ports. And, you know, it. And I, I was kind of guilty of this too, in my days at the Port of Bellingham. About not being more clear and articulate about what that means and why the port exists. And I know it's to support the economy, but. This general term of economic development, I think, needs a little bit more refinement in most ports and including your port. Secondly, is that like these other keystone documents. And I always encourage ports that their comp scheme is a living live document that should be continuously updated. To reflect your capital projects and support the priorities and the strategic plan. I don't know if most of you know, but when the, when the RCWs, when, when the legislature passed the creation of port authorities here in 1911. There was a lot of pushback that all of a sudden you're gonna have these new government agencies that have taxing power, powers of condemnation, and they were gonna run amok. And so the legislature developed this concept of the comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements back in 1911 to say. Listen, these ports, you know, can be able to build anything or spend lots of money until they have a public hearing. And they can't do anything that's not listed in the cops. So that's kind of the history. And that was the trade off in 1911 to get port authorities created in the state. Was to have these comp schemes with the requirement. So they're. I think they're very important and I think yours is up to date. I think it's a living document that update, I'd be updated. The port's current mission statement is creating economic opportunities by connecting Thurston County to the world by air, land, sea. And I think it's good, but it's pretty generalized. And you might think over time about. Developing something that's more focused, that identifies how you're connected by air, land and sea. I totally get the sea part with the shipping terminal. But it, it. And it's always a challenge to come up with something that people can remember. But that's inspiring, but it's also a little bit more focused. So it's a little bit of a challenge. And then interestingly enough, your also there with Vision 2050 Plan was an incredible community effort. The port accepted it in 2019, I believe. But it was never reconciled with the port strategic plan, which, and Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, it was last adopted in 2017. So those two plans. They out there, they're living out there, but I think it's important to reconcile the 20, Vision 2050 with your strategic plan. And those are some general observations about mission and purpose. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa to go over the findings, which Tracy, you're on the next slide. And then. We'll hesitate at the end when she's done. And then if you have any questions, may it be happy to take those.
Great, thank you, Jim. So essentially what we try to do with all of these observations is compile them into a finding for you and then. A couple of recommendations that would address that particular finding. So as Jim mentioned. About the port's mission and purpose, we generally found that the port's purpose and role in the community is not consistently understood and articulated. And then in order to address that, we would suggest undertaking a collaborative process to reconcile the 2017 strategic plan with the 2050 vision plan, as Jim mentioned. And then to also include an annual action plan in your strategic plan that helps implement. And prioritize the work that you plan to do each year in advancement of those different documents. The port has done a lot of work around outreach to your constituents. You are involved in a large number of critically important projects in the community. And because of that diversity of topics, it's understandable that there may be a lack of clarity about overall priorities among different groups. So ensuring that there's a clear purpose statement with specific prioritized action steps relating to fulfilling that purpose is really critical. Both for the port staff, for them to understand and be able to carry out their work on a day to day basis to implement and, and fulfill that purpose. But then also for transparency purposes. So the variety of constituents that you have and the community members. That you represent can truly understand port operations and activities. So I can pause right there and. See if there are any quick questions. Yes, Commissioner Azita?
So I think you hit the nail on the head here. Our strategic plan, we are due for a new strategic plan and. It should align with Vision 2050. Management made the decision to. Delay that process. We will have two new commissioners on our commission next year. And so doing the strategic planning process, hopefully next year. With Vision 2050 front and center will be important and we will need a good advisor for our. Strategic planning process. And maybe you can recommend someone.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I have a comment, Lisa. Can you go back one slide? And I'll formulate my question.
There you go.
So in other words, that first bullet. Beyond the opaque port industry concept of economic development, there's not a clear and commonly articulated understanding of the port's purpose for existence. So. Another, I mean, to me, that says that you've seen other ports with more or better clearly articulated. another, I mean, to me, that says that you've seen other ports with more or better clearly articulated purpose for existence. So I mean, is economic development a bad thing? Or, or do you think that in other ports is more clearly defined with their
Commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner, this is Jim. I, I don't think it's not a bad thing. It's just something that's a little bit endemic in the industry, to tell you the truth. And the general public looks at that and they go, you know, I, you know, I sort of like sort of get it, but I, but sometimes I think the community and some of your, your local not-for-profit partners and other local government agencies in the county, I think also would benefit from a, of a more precise definition of what your purpose is. And let me tell you, it's not easy to do. I'm not, I, I don't think it's, it, it can be done. And there are some ports that have more precise definitions. There are some that have more vague definitions of what they do, but I just, just something to the extent that you can get more focused, I think would be good. And it really tells you why you're unique in the community. What are you doing that nobody else can do? That kind of thing.
So in other words, I mean, I, I think, I think this is important because the original purpose of port districts, to my historical knowledge, was to safeguard areas of the community to help promote economic development, but also safeguard resources from being swallowed up by private industry. So I'm not sure that's still applicable today. I mean, I don't think we're continuing to create more port districts. We seem to, seem to leveled off at seventy-five or so. And, and so maybe it's time for, to search for a new meaning for existence.
Yeah, I, I, that's a, that's a good historical, I mean, historically, you know, a hundred and ten or twenty years ago, everybody was debating whether or not the state needed these new fangled port authorities and they were popping up these public ones all over the country. Part of the problem, it really had its seeds in Seattle where people just couldn't get down to the waterfront. It was all, it was privately held. It was, you know, urban planning hadn't hit the scene yet. And ports were brought in, as you mentioned, to protect those areas and straighten them out and use resources most effectively. So I think that reason is still there, but I always just encourage people to have a more precise reason for existence, a more unique one.
Yes. Oh. Just real quick, I, I support all of that and I agree. And I think again, it's a matter of greater clarity at economic development. This goes back to the conversation we had back in February where we were talking about mission versus margin. There are a lot of opportunities for economic development and there are lots of ways to accomplish that. And I think the important part is to help your community understand what specifically is it that the Port of Olympia is doing around economic development? And, and just generally it's, it's, it's full on purpose. So I think Commissioner Zeta, you had a question?
Well, a comment. When we did our 2017 strategic plan, there was a lot of discussion about whether our mission statement was appropriate. And I think, I don't remember what the old mission statement was. There was one a couple, a decade or two ago that we considered going back to. Commissioner McGregor might remember what that old one was. And we should consider the old one as a candidate when we do our new strategic plan, consider the old mission statement. And we should definitely update it because our current mission statement is not only vague. Economic opportunities mean different things to different people as they should, but it's also outdated. There's no room for broadband in there. And we have an important role to play in connecting Thurston County to the world, not just by air, land and sea, but with wifi, by broadband. So it's outdated, it's inaccurate. So it's got to be changed.
Yeah. And I think that's why, you know, you, the vision 2050 plan, which by, by the way, I think is a fabulous document. I, the level of input and the amount of work that went into that document was readily apparent when we take a look at it. And I think that that's the fundamental component of the recommendation to really undertake this collaborative process of reconciling, updating, re-establishing a strategic plan with that 2050 vision plan for sure. So yes, Commissioner Gregor, Gregor?
Well, if you're done, I'm just going to make a comment. What, what, what I've seen over the last, I'll say six or seven years, it might be a little bit longer than that is the cities of the bigger cities, Olympia, Tumwater and Lacey have all hired economic development directors. And I don't know if that's an indication of whether the port isn't doing what it should have, or if the Economic Development Council, which is also a part of the, that the port supports is, is missing something somewhere. But I'm just wondering if you've seen that in other areas where for instance, the Port of Bellingham and, or the city of Bellingham and any of the cities that are up in that area or anywhere else for that matter. If they have hired economic development directors in the past, it seems to be a trend that cities are getting into more. And I just wondered if you could come on that. And the other thing is we've always been under the impression that ports are an economic engine for the community. And so and I don't see much reflection on that. We do a cost benefit analysis on how many jobs do we create and how much leasehold tax we you know, is paid back into the surrounding communities as a result of the port having those lands and so on and so forth. So we're getting ready to update one just now. We've got a contract out to bring it back into 2019's comparison with a reflection on 2020 and what the impact kind of from the pandemic has had on, on the port. So I'm just curious if you have any comments on what you're seeing in trends with cities and economic development directors and on that behalf.
Lisa, I could comment on that. I, I think that it varies, Commissioner McGregor. And I think that some courses you know, are moving right into, into the role of being the, the associate development organization, the ADO for their county. Of course, that's county, it's planned by the county com- commissioner or council. That's the case in Bellingham. That's the case, I believe, at Walla Walla. There's a number of them around the state. I think there's eight now. So I think it varies a lot and my sense though, is that cities are going to continue and maybe counties to some extent, continue to develop an economic development presence from the community. Because I think sometimes I think ports are too distracted by other things. And it's also, I think, a little bit clearer in those port districts that are countywide, like you are, Bellingham. I think that there seems to be more of a reliance on the port authority to be the lead economic development agency. And having said that, that doesn't mean that ADOs or Economic Development Council are not a port or significant. I think particularly in those countywide ports, you're starting to see them play a bigger and bigger role. Like the ADO thing, for example, so.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim. And, and I would, I would add to that by just saying my own experience, I think it speaks to the opportunities. You know, there are a vast array of economic development activities and opportunities. And I think a lot of communities collectively have decided or, or needed to add those different players to the, to the mix in order to cover and maximize all those different opportunities. So yeah.
It's, it's an interesting challenge on that role. We, we, I was working with the port, smaller port in Eastern Washington, and they said they were created in the 1950s to build barge facilities on the river. And then the dams came along before they could build any. And so they started doing other things. And then they were originally intended to do. And I asked their commissioners, well, then why are you still in existence? And at that point, I thought I was going to lose the contract, but they were, they were really, they were very quiet for a bit. And then they had one of the best conversations I've ever seen in a port about why do they exist? And they did some soul searching and they popped out of that kind of with a refreshed perspective on their role in the community and their countywide port. So it's tough questions to ask yourselves, but I, I think you need to do it periodically.
So why don't we go ahead and move along to organizational alignment? And I think, yep, that's correct. Thanks, Tracy. Awesome.
Thanks, Tracy. So organization, like we've been talking a little about purpose and mission. And I talked about organizational alignment at the beginning of the presentation. So we'll go through this one quickly, but what it is, it's a commonly held and understood direction, priorities and vision for the future within the organization and how important those are. And it requires in the best organizations, resolute alignment. And it's hard to get to. I'm, I it's very difficult to get to, but it's one of those things sort of like getting in shape. You know, we want to get in shape and it's hard to do. But that alignment comes within the commission acting as a body of the whole. So they, they function as a body of the whole between the commission, as I mentioned earlier, and the CEO and staff. And then amongst the staff as well, they, they need to be aligned on the direction, but that starts with the commission. It works its way through the organization. Sorry about that. The the what's important is that they achieve and maintain that resolute alignment. And it can be, it can be very elusive. And it requires constant upkeep. It really is like staying in shape and going to the gym all the time. You know, it really requires work to do that. But I think it pays off in the, in the long run. And the other thing is that there's any misalignment, no matter how small, it, it affects the port's ability to deliver on its mission. It, it's surprisingly disruptive to the organization. So you all know this. I think this is, this is why organizational alignment is important.
Right. And so our finding and recommendation on that, if you want to go one more slide, Tracy, thank you. So as with almost any port out there, there is an opportunity for port, the Port of Olympia to achieve greater alignment within the organization. And so, and we believe strongly, I think Jim and John and I all believe very strongly that the, the strategic planning process that we mentioned in the previous recommendation is, is infinitely important in terms of providing that purpose and prioritization. But then also another recommendation we have is to create a customized and thorough process for new commissioners and staff to be oriented to the port. So I've had, I've heard come, you know, people contemplate running for a port commissioner and really not recognizing initially at least how many different things it is that the port district does. You are, the Port of Olympia is involved in every line of business that available to a port district with all of your facilities. And it is a lot to take in. So having a, a port specific training program to onboard new commissioners and help staff be oriented to what port districts do is a really helpful way in which you can find some of that alignment within your organization, particularly once you establish that good, solid picture of what your, what your purpose is and what your priorities are. So any thoughts along those lines? Commissioner Zeta?
Of course, the Washington Public Ports Association, WPPA, has some great trainings for new commissioners, but those are more general. They're really important to go through. And I think you're totally correct that the port specific training program is a really great idea.
And WPPA does do a great job with their training and they have lots of, you know, topic specific seminars throughout the year, environmental finance administration. Sometimes they do economic development. They typically do a new commissioner training. But you're right, this is, and, and that's why this recommendation is here is that they're, because you are a diverse organization and because you are doing a lot of really critically important functions in your community, it's important to have a process that's specific and customized to the Port of Olympia in terms of bringing new commissioners and port, port staff into the, into the fold. So do we want to move?
Oh, yeah. I, I, I would agree with that statement wholeheartedly because if you look what the qualifications are to run for a port commissioner, they're very minimal. So I would agree.
But you know, Commissioner McGregor, also you, you've been around the port industry for a while. It's true of bringing in staff, particularly if they come from the private sector. They need to have a good, you know, indoctrination, so to speak, into what it's like to make decisions for the public sector. And likewise, if you bring in somebody in the public sector that's just a lot of experience in the marine terminal, they're not so sure about the marinas and the airport. And so I, I, I think you're right about commissioners, but I also think it's, sometimes we overlook the staff, you know? Particularly the senior level staff that come in that, that so our ideas that would be targeted at both new commissioners and new staff.
If we want to move on to the financial and just to let you know, John Carter has joined us and he is in, in the, in the speaking room now. So John, if we have questions, we'll, we'll punt them to you. But Jim, do you want to go ahead and run through some of these observations on the financial side?
So obviously the, the fuel that drives the port's ambition and priorities is its financial capacity. I mean, it's just, that's the way the world works and it's very important to, to recognize that. You know, rigorous oversight of the financial resources because they're limited, it really underpins the Olympia's ability to deliver on previous commitments and reach new milestones. It's a lot of times there's a desire to expand, but if the financial resources are not in place or readily obtainable, you know, it has a chilling effect on that kind of expansion and growth. And we said before in the Keystone documents, the, the financial tools are the budget, both operating capital and an adopted set of broad financial guidelines that would, and I think you have those, but that would identify things like the amount of reserves, what your, your debt to equity ratios would be, what your debt coverage ratio should be. In other words, how much money do you have to cover your existing debt? And the budget's really, it's, it's a roadmap, just like the strategic planning comp scheme, but they all got to work in alignment and harmony together. I, the one thing I always, I always remind more staffs, quite honestly, than I do commissioners. And your staff takes a budgeting process very seriously, but if, if an organization looks at the budget as some kind of governmental formality that you've got to run through and, and consider it independent of the strategic direction, it, it's, it's going to result in misalignment and efficiency. It, as I said earlier, it is, it is the sheet of music the orchestra plays by. And it really provides that fuel that drives the priorities in the strategic plan. So I, I, I see it all too often that, you know, we just got to get through this budget thing and then we get on with our work. Well, that's not, and I'm not saying Olympia looks at it that way, but that's, you see that often in the industry and that's obviously not the right way to look at it. So I think John would confirm that the, the budgeting process is where you can make some of those tough decisions that are in support of your strategic direction, but put some of the meat on the bone so it's to move forward. Wouldn't you agree with that, John?
Yes. And I'm sorry, I was in the meeting, but I wasn't able to connect through on the, to get actually into the access to the video. So yeah, I, Jim, I do agree. You know, the key to this is integrating the financial discipline with the strategic vision that's going on within the port. And that, that, that step by itself will make a big difference in the financial management for the entire port.
Yeah. So Tracy, if you can go to the next slide here, you, you know, this is, this is probably the, one of the more fundamental pieces of our recommendations, along with the strategic planning process. But we all strongly feel that it's really essential for the port to have a strategic and collaborative budgeting process. We believe that that budgeting process should be based on a multi-year forecast. Forecast both in terms of assumptions about what we think might happen in the industry. What are, what we think are the financial needs and resources are of the port districts. And it's important to keep that forecasted condition in the forefront and continuously updated. So the recommendations that we've come up with around that particular finding are, again, to adopt the strategically driven and collaborative budget process. That includes both revenues and expenses as well as long-term, a long-term capital investment plan and a financing or a funding plan for that, those capital investments. And we feel pretty strongly that it's important to have an explanation of your budgeting process and your, and the assumptions that you've made. Again, we want to have you develop multiple year, multi-year financial projections. We would suggest doing that by each line of business. So that they are updated on a regular basis, along with a, a clear description of the focused priorities and metrics that, that the port commission is adopting in terms of an expression of the strategic direction of the port district. that the port commission is adopting in terms of an expression of the strategic direction of the port district. And again, the financial guidelines that really cover all of the financial management processes, including operations, investment and debt guidance. We have a suggested strategic budget process that we can go over here in just a second, but let me pause there and see if anybody has any questions while we're contemplating these particular recommendations.
So the the timeline might be informative here.
Yeah, Commissioner Zeta, did you have something real quick? And then we can run to the next slide, Tracy.
Yeah, this sounds really terrific. We've had a lot of turnover in our financial staff and can we go back to just that previous one? Because those are great recommendations. We've had a lot of turnover in our financial staff and we used to have multi-year projections of our financial measures and of the financial situation for our different depths and for our different business units. And Matt Peach is starting to do that for us again now, which is very useful. There's been a lot of discussion about what financial metrics we should be using. We have adopted a set of financial metrics in our resolution from years ago. And the reporting has been kind of changing recently. So I think your recommendations are very useful. Would love to see this.
Excellent. Thank you. So Tracy, if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide here, we can run through this real quickly and then we can cover this topic a little bit more here shortly, but we feel like, you know, once your strategic plan is in place, the purpose of the organization is abundantly clear to all parties involved, there's good alignment around what the priorities are. This strategic budgeting process is one that we feel is something that may take a budget cycle or two in order to implement, but is really very important in terms of the transparency and the clarity around the budget being the primary tool for the port district in terms of establishing its path forward. So in early spring, we would have staff prepare both financial reports as well as strategic reports so that the commission, the governing body understands where the organization is in terms of implementing the priorities. At a retreat, the commission and staff would review those progress reports. Again, understanding so that everybody is on the same page in terms of a level of understanding about where the financial health of the organization is. What do you have available for capital budgets? And again, what are the priorities? What are the key priorities for the organization in terms of where you want to spend your resources, not just financial, honestly, but also your staff resources? And based on that first retreat, we would, a couple of things would happen. The strategic plan would be updated. So your strategic plan can have goals and strategies over the cover of five to 10-year period. But it often, often includes specific action steps that need to be updated on an annual basis. You need to document your progress towards accomplishing your different goals. So if you update your strategic plan, you create that clarity again early in the year, midway through the year, so that the community understands your priorities. And at the same time, staff is beginning a collaborative process of preparing the operating and capital budgets. Building on the information out of the retreat, building on these line of business-based budgets and projections that that staff has gone through. Out of that initial updating and the initial review, then the commission can up, can come back and take a look at the long-term forecasts. And and again, this is where you understand, okay, if we have this kind of an obligation in terms of ongoing operating or maintenance activity, what does that leave available for our capital budget? So there's this feedback loop where staff is continuously asking the commission for direction, going back, doing some work and reporting back to the commission again on on questions that are are indicative of the direction they provided. And there's an ongoing back and forth throughout the course of the year. And then in the fall, staff presents the preliminary budget for further consideration. There's a lot of review and discussion. There's a lot of staff work, especially at the management team level that's happening throughout that process. And by statute, you're required to adopt your annual budget and report it basically before the end of November, the first Monday of December, you're supposed to transmit your adopted budget to the county auditor's office. So that is the strategic budgeting process that we would generally recommend. Again, it's this is pretty generalized and it is assumed and predicated on this idea that we have created clear standards, clear priorities, a clear purpose statement through the strategic planning process. So I'll pause right there and ask again if there's any thoughts or comments around financial recommendations that we came up with.
I'll say something here. Let's see if I'm, make sure I'm not muted. I like the idea of integrating multi-year financial look with the budget, each year's budget, because each year budget standing alone doesn't tell you, you know, where you're going, except in the short term. But a budget, the interesting thing about a budget, it's, and I've, having been in private industry and public industry, the public sector, budgets in the public sector are, you know, what you know you're going to achieve. So it's really not, you know, where do you want to get to? It's what, what do you know you're going to achieve in the coming year? So you know, I like the idea, Lisa, of, you know, pulling together a multi-year look and Commissioner Zeta mentioned, we had that in the past, and I think that it's very important to have a rolling five-year look to see where we want to really, what we're really trying to achieve.
Yeah, it's, it's really fundamentally important. I, I did this at the Port of Douglas County when I first got there and the commissioners were appreciative where they hadn't, they hadn't, they didn't have that information. So they weren't given the 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 projections. And I think that if you might recall from our February retreat with you, Jim talked in in our presentation about the difference between accounting and finance. So accounting is sort of the backward look. It's the reporting of what you've done. And and finance is really about that projection of where you intend to go. And so the important thing about the recommendation, and this will be coming up here in a little bit, so I won't speak too too directly to it, but it's important to be able to understand the implications of your decisions today on your financial capacity and your financial resources five and 10 years down the road, so that you don't limit your opportunity for growth. And you're ensuring that you're meeting your obligations that you've already, and your commitments that you've already put into place. So all right, we want to move on to the line of business. Jim?
Yeah. So we looked at the lines of businesses and had these observations that you know, these business unit, unit financial success or line of business is typically evaluated on a return on investment calculation. You know, we put X amount of dollars in of operating cost into a real estate investment or our entire real estate portfolio and we're experiencing this kind of return on investment. That's kind of the industry standard. It's pretty well developed throughout ports in the state. Real estate tends to be, and I think it's true with you too, one of the most prolific investments by ports is one with the high, one of the highest net profit margins. If you're building and you're being competitive with the private marketplace, but you are going into the real estate market with a public mission in mind would do that. You know this as well as as we do, that the growth in the aviation sector beyond generally aviation, but in the commercial is largely a regional market consideration. That's a governing factor there. The stability of your harbor facilities really reflect the mortgage trends in Puget Sound, which quite frankly are going to bigger and bigger vessels as boat owners that have more trailerable sized vessels. You know, actually pull them out of the water for the for the winter months. And you see, I know a number of ports in Puget Sound are looking at their, the sort of the demographic of their mortgage facilities. And are they really serving that market on into the future? Because it's definitely changing. In fact, dry boat storage now, I was reading the other day that they're handling up to 50 and 60 foot vessels and dry boat robotic storage out of the water. So that market's changing. And then deep water draft facilities like the Marine Terminal, they're sensitive, obviously, to commodity trends, logistic competitiveness, because you can't sort of like airports, you can't move them very easily. But they're also difficult, like airports do, they're very difficult to permit. And so as you look at those going down the road, I think it's important to fully explore what, how you want to treat those facilities in the future, because they are, are very hard to recreate. So these are just some observations. As I said earlier at the start, you you've got a pretty diverse portfolio and I think that's great. And in talking with all of these sector managers, they they understand the markets they're in. And I I think that's really helpful to 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 have that on the ground knowledge about those markets. Lisa?
Yeah. So Tracy, on the next slide, please. So the finding that we have provided here is that we we're recognizing and acknowledging that the first line of business portfolio that the port has and would also, you know, outline for you that that is a significant opportunity for growth, which allows the port district to continue to maintain and promote its purpose. So one of the recommendations, this is tied again to financial, is we would recommend that each line of business lead work at developing a 10-year financial forecast for their for their particular line of business at the port. And that would be, you know, not just looking at maintenance and replacement needs. Where are there opportunities for expansion? What are the operating revenues and expenses? And and again, you know, the the burden of shared overhead costs, you know, it it takes a lot of money to run an entity like the Port of Olympia. And so understanding how each line of business contributes to that and and then therefore shares in that that cost. And we wanted to really point out here that the financial forecasts that we're talking about, they are educated guesses. They are predictions. They are guidance tools. They're, they're not an accountability tool. So you know, doing a financial projection shouldn't be something that a a business lead should be afraid to do. We're just asking for the line of business lead to say, using my best educated, most professional guess about, and knowing what I know about the Port of Olympia facility that I run, here's what I would guess is the, is the projection out into the future that allows the port commission then to make educated guesses about day-to-day operations. And again, they're not, they're not just stagnant. You don't just do one 10-year financial forecast. So harkening back to the strategic budgeting process that we talked about, once those forecasts are developed each year at the start of that process, you would take a look at those forecasts and and figure out, did, were we on, were we off? What do we need to change? And again, taking that next 10-year lookout, update those financial forecasts to educate and inform the budgeting process. So I can pause right there. Yes, Commissioner Zeta?
So to make this process not overly burdensome for staff and to make it easier for management and commissioners to digest, we probably want all of these forecasts to look the same across each business unit. So we want a similar, we want one package that everybody can use, that it's easy to plug in the same kind of data and spit out the same kind of, same format of output and easy to update each year. So I expect that either someone like Matt Peach in financial or your organization can advise our our leads on one system that everybody can use that's not too difficult.
Yeah, that's, that's a really great point. You know, a lot of times people say, well, we don't want to compare apples to oranges, but in the case of public sector finance, it's not unusual that you are comparing apples and oranges. You're trying to prioritize if you're going to eat the apple or the orange first. At a city, it's the difference between a water system project, a sewer system project and a transport to a road project. So how do you prioritize those? So absolutely, it's fundamentally important that the projections, the assumptions that are being made are as clear and as consistent across those different lines of business. Jim or John, either of you have anything to add to that?
Well, I was just going to say that John can attest to, there's, there's some good templates or to follow commissioner and and I think you're right about that. And and you know, the lines of business managers go into it where there's some overreaching organizational assumptions going into about what do you assume about cost of living adjustments on salary? Where do we think health benefits are going and those kinds of things? So they don't have to reinvent every little number in the forecast. But it's a good opportunity. I think, John, you'll hear from John Carter, he'll say that 10 years is a stretch, it's kind of hard to do. Be more modest than I, I'm always, the former ED, I'm always pushing the 10-year look. But but on our team with John, he's able to develop those kinds of templates that would be very practical and useful for the management team.
And maybe if I could just make a couple of comments. One is, is that any of us that have been in the port industry for a while realize that many, if not all of our capital plans typically take multiple years, up to 10 or 15 years to really develop. And with that becomes a lot of risk of things like stranded, stranded infrastructure. How do you fund these things over the long term? How do you manage your debt? So a 10-year forecast helps set the template for providing guidance for long-term funding plans. And I will say this as well, that in my experience, when you have those kinds of information available and some metrics to measure against, that it does open up potential financial options for you that would not be available if you hadn't thought through the longer term impacts of some of the business decisions regarding finance itself. So hopefully that's helpful.
All right.
Okay.
We'll move along to the next focus area. Jim?
So this one's on organizational culture and it, we we kind of debated what to name it. It really is more focused on the management team, the culture within that group of professionals. And as I said earlier, it really is the collection of attitudes and particularly values, but also practices of each individual team member that are serving the the larger goal of the organization. It's it's defined through a clear understanding of the distinct role of each team member. So they're clear and and when you go into the budgeting process, you want to make sure that the, it just is an example for, that the lines of business managers are responsible for developing their budget and they're not told this is your budget, so kind of live with it, but they're actually held responsible to develop it and then present it. And then there's a group can work through it, as John was suggesting. What, one thing we always do is, is it seems like a trite thing, but is is finding efficiencies by more effective meeting and communication practices. It's sort of, it's once again, one of those things about going to the gym, we got to try more and more. When we were developing this presentation for you, I did some research about it. It was something like, at about 30 minutes, most people, you lose about 20% of your audience at a meeting that lasts 45 minutes or more. You're down to 60% attention level. And I I I can attest to that myself. So just being, everybody's busy and being mindful of people's time is is important. And then the big thing that, you know, all these things we're getting at for the organizational culture and how it works together as a team is that they're all, particularly the financial projections are all working towards being more proactive in decision-making and reactive. And and those decisions by the staff and making recommendations to the commission are always forward-looking. And their financial projections, they're, they're very proactive rather than reactive. So I think that's what the ultimate goal of all of this is. Lisa?
Yeah. So next slide, Tracy. So our finding then is we, we, we found that you have a very good professional staff, very competent. You have, they all have successfully embraced sort of this team development idea. They're, they are strongly committed to the organization. And recognizing that, as is the case, even in the most advanced sorts of organizations, there is an ongoing need for additional training and skill development and clarity around policies and procedures and guidelines. Um, and uh clarity around policies and procedures and guidelines. So our two recommendations would be to adopt an annual calendar of staff oriented training activities. Maybe it's leadership oriented, maybe it's financially oriented, but that there be a commitment to the professional staff. In the organization to uh carrying out the day to day work and helping them learn more to be able to uh support that work. Um, and then uh undertaking a comprehensive phased review and update of the port's operating and management policies and practices. Um, so this is like your promotional hosting resolution, your uh delegation of authority. It is um not uncommon for port districts to have these policies. That are uh compiled and created over time. Um, to be spread out and not always easily accessed. And it's really common to adopt a resolution that upstate updates a policy. And then, you know, all of a sudden you have two resolutions that you need to look at in terms of uh understanding what the overall policy is. So um, our recommendation would be to go through the process of, you know, where are your operating procedures? And how can you compile them so they're easily accessible? And how can you keep them front and center in terms of um updating them as uh the legislation changes? And as uh your priorities change, um, it's important to have those in a in a good um. Uh, easily to easy to i- identified location uh and um update process to do so. You pause right there for any, any thoughts? I will tell you that um, one of the largest things that we had to do when we consolidated the ports of Shalane and Douglas County before I left. Was um, the Shalane Douglas Regional Port Authority is an entirely separate legal entity. And so all of the required policies and procedures from pro- procurement to CIPA policies. To um, personnel policies, they all had to be done. And there is a big long list, um, so it is not a a small undertaking.
And that's why you'd want to do it over time and phase it, to make it more manageable, yeah. Okay, move on to next area. So the the last one is uh outreach and messaging. I I will tell you uh commissioners that the number one thing I hear from ports around the state of the community doesn't know what we do. Despite all of our best intentions and efforts, and I think it's it's really um, it's a challenge. I, I remember a few years ago, I read an old um editorial uh in the Seattle paper back in the 1930s. The Seattle Court Commission was complaining about the community didn't know what it was doing. And it couldn't, didn't know how to tell its story, and I think that that still goes on today. Of course, they're just interesting municipal special purpose governments and it's hard. And if if you don't, if you don't have a retail touch, it's even harder to tell that story. You know, and I'll use my example uh in Bellingham. You know, the the marine terminal in Bellingham um really was a business to business relationship with the shipping companies. The Port of Bellingham had the advantage of having a commercial passenger airport, so it had a retail touch. On people who came through the airport with their kids or on business travel. And the marinas, you have it in the marina, it's more of a retail touch than your marine terminal, which is more of a business to business relationship. So it's very difficult to tell the that story. Um, school districts, of course, have the ultimate local government retail touch because they deal with every student and every student's parent. As they go through for 12 years of school. Um, so that's a challenge and it's it's difficult to overcome. Um, the other one is the use of property taxes is always obviously a sensitive issue. And creating the public purpose and being very specific about why the course living those taxes can be elusive and it's hard to do. And I think that comes back uh to some of the financial document management about exactly where does every tax dollar go. Um, it it it's a challenge for every port, but it's it's very critical in telling your story. Um, the other thing that we observed that your your lines of businesses, like most ports, are pretty distinct, but they're interconnected with a common mission. And as you talk about your different lines of businesses, whether it's the Rotary Club or Articles. Um, the port's overall mission that binds all of those lines of businesses together needs to be highlighted. And that gets back to that thing we talked about in the very first few slides about the articulating that purpose. And I I I'm not being unrealistic, these are, all three of these are tough challenges um. Uh, for every port, um, and every port wrestles with them to a high degree. But you have a great and compelling story. And you know, our observation was you have a communication talent to deliver it, whether it's broad or focused audiences. So um, getting that mission statement tuned up. Uh, being more articulate about where your taxes are going, all are in support of having a much better delivery in terms of telling the Port of Olympia story.
So then our findings and recommendations around this um, on this particular focus area. So um, this recommendation is particularly appu- applicable as the port considers to. Uh, the option of maybe implementing some of our previous recommendations, but we really feel it's important that the ports. Uh, messaging and outreach approach be up updated and refreshed following uh the collaborative effort between staff and the commission. To um, uh, reconfirm and identify that port mission and to clearly articulate priorities. Um, and so the uh, the recommendation is to do, create that uh updated message and refreshed message. Um, develop it through this collaborative and facilitated process between the commission and the management team. Uh, following the the strategic plan up update. Um, and really uh, uh, ensuring that the alignment that is developed between the commission and the staff. And among the staff are following that process is clearly articulated in uh the information that you. Um, push out to your constituents in the community. Any questions around that particular finding? Yes, Commissioner Zina?
You know, we've spent a lot of money on PR and. I agree that we should have good messaging, but I really don't want to see us spending a lot more money on PR.
Yeah, and um, I don't think it's necessarily how much money you're spending, but making sure that the messaging that you're providing. Is again, uh, uh, Jim mentioned this in one of his observations that the the finding, the information that you're sharing is clearly articulated. And that as the presentation at Rotary is happening. Um, around the marine terminal or the marina with those focus areas, that there is a continuous connection back towards the overall mission. Um, of the organization, so um, we have um one last slide. Uh, which is basically a summary of our recommendations. Um, they're listed one through 10 here. Um, I guess I would say uh they are all here for your consideration. These are our recommendations based on what we've been able to find uh through our process. Uh, with your organization and um. Tell us what you think.
Well, I I would like to say uh, one thing to summarize as well is that. You you know, this stuff doesn't all have to be done tomorrow morning, you know, this is a process that you you take. Um, the basic foundational things first, I think number one is one of those basic foundational things to update your strategic plan with the 2050 vision. Um, but I think you you lay out a strategy over a period of time to to work on these and some are more important than others, so. Uh, I don't want to leave you the impression that that they all have to be done at one time. Um, uh, you know, I I have my biases, you know, I think the 10 year financial forecast is the most important thing you could do. But organizationally, you can figure out which of these is first, second, third uh to go down the 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 list. And um, you you've got a great start, you've got a a great team uh in support that know their business. So I think it's just a matter of getting strategically strategically organized.
Um, I have a comment, uh. Jim, I think, or John, on number six. You know, adopt financial guidelines for all financial management, operations, investment and debt guidance. Uh, you know, I personally, as one commissioner, think we have. Way too many financial guidelines and they, and they really badly need to be redone. Um, I guess there's been this silent conflict between some members of the port commission and port staff. Over whether or not we need a CFO. So you know, a CFO. Even though they're expensive and, you know, and we've not had perhaps exceptional luck with them over the years. They bring that level of authority to the conversation and then the port commission, you know, can get behind it. So this particular port commission, in my opinion, you know, we've had a lot of, you know, conflicting discussions over financial guidelines or financial measures. Um, what's your opinion about uh the lack of a CFO and uh vis a vis other ports? In Port of Olympia.
John, you want to take this one?
I can try. Um, well, I was a CFO for, in both the private and public sector for over 30 years. So I I do think that it's important to have somebody that has very, very strong uh understanding. Not just of the operating, operating issues relative to finance, but also is well aware of what's going on. In the financial world itself, has the relationships, has the credibility, has a lot of the tools that are available. To help with long term financial planning. As Lisa said earlier, the financial role is the one where you're really helping set the stage for looking out in the future by setting up the. What I like to call the sideboards for how you're going to operate within the financial community. Um, that however, I will say all that, that does not have to be done with the CFO, it can be done with a uh executive position. That would report to uh as a deputy director, for example, or something of that nature. I've seen it done a number of ways, but the expertise, the relationships. And the credibility to continue to monitor things and mi- and move it forward, those all have to be present in the port for a good financial plan to be in place. And I do want to clarify on on the recommendation of financial guidelines, you do have financial guidelines, you do have some metrics. But to be candid, they're they're a little bit disjointed, there's pieces that are floating around in different places that get used for different. Different aspects of your planning process and what I like to see is one document that sets the stage. For all aspects of your financial plan, let me just give you one example. Um, I did not see in any of my looking through your um financial policies. On why you choose to use general obligation bonds over revenue bonds. Uh, as a public agency, a special purpose district, you uniquely have the ability to utilize your revenues for debt. As well as having di- some capacity for geo bonds. And not having those clearly delineated on what, when you would use one over the other one and why you would. Um, limits your ability to have a debt, a debt plan in place. So that's just one example of the kind of thing that I was hoping to recommend within these uh, the structures of these recommendations. So I hope, I hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, John.
That helps a lot and that sort of um guidance and justification and clarity. Um, we got that type of thing from our previous CFO. I found having a knowledgeable and accessible person in that seat was very useful. Um. And I hope we will consider filling that position.
Yeah, and so, so these are just a summary of our recommendations. Um, we will have a written documents to follow up with a few more details. So the, you know, the details that John just covered um will hopefully be conveyed um in the, excuse me, in the written materials. So um, we wanted to give you an overview and um a report on our work to date and um get your feedback. Christian McGregor?
Yeah, if I can, thank you for uh all the information that you've provided. Uh, I just want to make a comment that uh, you know, as far as outreach and messaging, no matter how hard a port tries. It just doesn't quite get there for the general public because as Eric Johnson, the former director of WPPA says. Ports are like a platypus, you know, they're 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 not one animal over another, they're kind of a a hybrid. Uh, we're, we're, we are government and we are business. And those two trying to link them together to come up uh with with that is is very difficult. Uh, business people tend to understand the part of it. Policymakers and government people understand the other parts and sometimes the two don't mix real well. Uh, but anyway, uh, I appreciate this. My question is, what, these 10 items that you've given us as a summary. What kind of implementation timeline do you see that being? Is this a year project? Is this a multi-year project? Uh, in bringing all of these together, what 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 speed of efficiency should we be using to get to to where you're recommending?
Um, I'm going to take a stab at it and then Jim and John, I'm sure will will add to it. Um, I think this is uh, you know, the first and from my perspective, the first and most fundable fundamental steps are the. Um, reconciling the strategic plan and having abundant clarity around what your purpose is in the community and what your priorities. Um, as the commission and with the role of that that governance role, what are the priorities? How do we get things done? And the strategic plan and the annual action strategy that we mentioned in that first recommendation. Um, are really um, really important to do that. The second thing I think is the financial, um, the budgeting process. Now, in terms of overall timeline, I think you're talking about a year to two to get all of these systems in place. But when, once they're in place, then the process of updating them and managing them and maintaining them um can become just. Would hopefully become a, an ongoing day to day part of your day to day processes um in a calendar. Um, a year in terms of, you know, in May, we start doing this. In June and July, we're doing this so that there's, um, it becomes more routine uh to incorporate these as. Uh, an overall part of your day to day business. And Jim and John, I don't know if you have other thoughts about that?
Yeah, I think that that makes sense and and it really, it 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 really uh. Uh, requires that the executive director and your your lead financial person. Along with the commission, pull some of these things to get them done and completed, but then keep them as living documents that are of value. That takes some work. Um, it's really easy to get the strategic plan adopted, it becomes shelf art, nobody picks it up. But um, as an example, um, my experience with that has been that the goals in the strategic plan. Had to accompany every single action item went to the commission. And it it takes discipline and it, it'll take a couple fiscal year cycles to. Uh, get the organization to understand that we're serious about these and it it it's just hard work to get it done, it's doable. And once it gets up and running, uh, it actually becomes pretty easy, sort of like learning how to ski, you know, once you get up and you can get your legs underneath you. It just sort of happens and it becomes very fluid. Um, but I would agree with Lisa that the, the strategic plan, vision plan reconciliation with the annual action plan. And the new uh staff and commissioner orientation ought to be done early next year. Uh, and I'm, you know, we we can fine tune this and then you're going to get ready to do the budget things in the budget cycles that are coming up next year and the following year. So uh. You know, it's like, it's like laying block or brick, you know, it's like you gotta get them straight. And quality is a little bit more important than speed, um, particularly in the first couple rows. And so I think that's, that's the the thinking there.
So it it involves, of course, uh, a good, strong foundation on which to grow on is what you're alluding to, I believe. Uh, so my other question is, are we uh? Better off not trying to struggle with this between staff and commission, but bringing a a third party in. To help us uh assimilate all of this information and get the program going. Um, I I've, I've learned in my experience that sometimes the third party uh is more accepted by not only staff. But as from commissioners as well, as we try to move uh and put these programs in place. And uh, I just, I know you're a third party consultant, but I'm I'm kind of asking the fox about the hen house. But uh, but maybe not, but I've just, just curious on your perspective. Or do we have to hire more staff to help get to that point? What, what's your perspective on that?
My perspective on that is that, yeah, you can bring in third parties, whether it's us or somebody else. Um, you're, I I will tell you, you're not going to do any better than Mr. Carter, who's on on the call with us today in terms of financials. But um, but he's trying to retire now, so that. But I, but I think that uh, yeah, you don't need to have, you know, necessarily more staff to do it, but maybe a third party coach. It's sort of like getting in shape at the gym, that's what you need, it's a training coach um to to go through it. Because third parties can tell you the things that your staff may not tell you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that's a good role, that's a good role for them to play.
Thank you.
And Commissioner McGregor, I would like to comment that I agree with Lisa on the alignment of the strategic plan with your vision. And I would add one point to that is that I, I think without that, almost the rest of the recommendations really can't happen to the point of being as effective as they could be. To me, that is exactly what you just referred to is setting the foundation for how do you set the priorities so that you can build a, a good financial plan and funding plan, capital plan, all the other pieces you need to actually function as an organization. So to me, that's the very, very most critical first step.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Sam. That's all we have for you today and maybe we're only a few minutes over.
Thank you, all three of you for that presentation. That's pretty high level and also you hit on, you know, some things that, that at least for one commissioner, you know, I can really get behind. So thank you for that objective. I considered a very objective look at our organization and, you know, how we could lay things out in the future to become more effective and more effective port. Thank you.
Welcome. It's been a pleasure.
Okay. Bye guys.
See ya.
We'll talk soon.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to our last agenda item. We've got a few minutes left. I might have to run a few minutes over if that's okay. We'll see how this goes. So this last topic is called five-member commission ballot measure. And I've been in consultation with our executive director and Felicia over the past couple of weeks about this issue. So, but we agreed that it is best be brought forward from staff, even though I'm the main impetus for this discussion. And I see that Felicia was presenting, but on my latest copy, I see Sam Gibbons presenting, so I assume it's a co-presenter situation.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner. Thank you. And I just want to do a, a quick introduction to this topic. And a, a, as you mentioned, and I think it's important for the commission as a whole to, to understand certainly the, the public that this is not a staff initiated, initiated topic that Commissioner Downing in his leadership role as Chair of the, the commission has decided to bring this forward. And, and I also think that it's, the, the community has, has set this as a priority too. And if you will recall from the, the Port Vision 2050 action plan under, you know, the, the, the goal set forth there, the, the community really articulated a desire to improve the port's ability to make decisions, achieve it, achieve its objections and missions and to implement the Vision 2050 recommendations to become an innovative economic development leader. And, and further and more specifically to explore the viability of expanding to a, to five port commission, a five port commissioner commission. So it is with that in mind that our general counsel, Felicia Brown, is here to give you the, the kind of technical ins and outs of this. And then I would suggest that Commissioner Downing, at that point, we turn the floor back over to you and you can give some more, more context and why you brought this forward and then facilitate the, the discussion from there. So with that, I will turn the floor to Felicia.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Downing. Thank you, Sam. Good afternoon, everybody. I'll start off today giving a little bit of background. As you know, we have three commissioners and we have three districts. The RCW actually gives guidance on this process of going from three commissioners to five commissioners. And you essentially can have a ballot proposition submitted to the voters. And we're here today to talk about the venue of getting the ballot proposition to the voters that is going to rest upon this commission adopting a resolution proposing that increase. The other thing that you will see here on the screen is that this could be done by a citizen petition. Tracy, can you go to the next slide? Thank you. But we're talking about the commissioners adopting a resolution. And so we're going to go over what's required to get on the general election ballot. And so the first thing that would need to happen is that a majority vote of this commission would need to direct me, as general counsel, to prepare a resolution proposing this increase to five commissioners. The sec, the resolution can, no, thank you. The resolution can either propose the creation of five districts of approximately equal population or the resolution can propose maintaining the current three districts and essentially having the two additional commissioners be, and for the district of the entire county. A majority of the commission would need to vote to adopt the resolution that I was able to prepare based off the commissioners' instructions. And we actually would have to have this to the county auditor by August 3rd, 2021, so that it could be on the November 2021 ballot. And then once it's on the general election in November, it must pass with a majority vote. Next slide, please. And so after that, if approved by the voters and if five districts are proposed, new district boundaries would have to be submitted to the county auditor within another 120 days. And after the districts are re, I don't know the word, redrawn, thank you. We would be able to submit them to the next election and have the two additional port commissioners run for those offices. We would then follow the RCWs regarding the length of terms as determined by both the year of the election and the number of votes received during the election. Next slide, Tracy. Thank you. Commissioners, you may recall that we've had a couple of presentations regarding the current redistricting that's under, underway. And we learned in those presentations that the census numbers should be back to us no later than the end of September. And one thing to keep in mind is an additional consideration is the election cost that's not currently in the budget. And then last slide here. Thank you. Staff, including myself, are here to answer any questions about this process and procedure, but I'd like to give it back to Commissioner Downing as the chair so that he can talk further.
Well, thanks, Felicia, and, and thanks, commissioners, for considering this topic. Now, I've thought a lot, not just in the past couple of weeks, but I've thought about this over the past couple of years, literally, and wondering when a good time would be to, if and when to bring this forward. My basic impetus is that the four-year commission term and the three commissioners make for a bad combination such that in my short tenure as a port commissioner, here we are. When Commissioner Zeta and I joined the port commission, that was two-thirds turnover at the commission level. And here we are at the end of this year, facing already another two-thirds turnover of the commission. So what that does is it creates a lot of upheaval at the commission level and it creates upheaval at the staff level. The staff, as you know, is very responsive to the commission and trying to figure out what the commission's will is. It's not always clear. And when you have a big turnover at the commission level, it creates a lot of uncertainty at the staff level. It also creates a discontinuity of decision-making at the commission level. We are going in a certain direction and then you have two people coming in with totally unknown positions on things and so forth. Also, it's a greater knowledge base at the commission level. It's perhaps more equitable representation across the county for, to have five districts especially. And, and each district represents a certain area, whether it be South County, East County, North County, Olympia and so forth. And I, and also finally, the, it was identified as a positive idea coming from Vision 2050. And Vision 2050 recommended we explore this idea. So, you know, I'm not overly invested in terms of which way this goes, but I would like to, you know, have that dialogue among us to figure out, is this really the right thing for the Port of Olympia? And finally, I did speak with, in my research, I spoke with two commissioners at Port of Anacortes, that's a five-person commission, by the way. Two commissioners from Port of Edmonds, which is a five-person commission. I spoke with an executive direct, director at Port of Skagit County. And I finally spoke with Frank Schmellick, the WTPA general counsel. And Frank Schmellick, of course, did not give an opinion pro or con to five-person districts, but we did have a good conversation about the RCW and what it means and the ins and outs of going from three to five. But everybody else I spoke to was quite positive in the fact that it creates a, a better, just better decision-making. More representation, greater knowledge base, some of the things that I've said, and the ability of two of the five commissioners to work as a subcommittee and work to discuss issues, of course, any action is still taken in public, public meetings and so forth. So I'm pretty excited to bring this idea forward. And, you know, with that background, I mean, ask my fellow commissioners or open it up for dialogue. Commissioner Zeta, please.
So Commissioner Downing, I think that a five-person commission might be a great idea. If I understand you correctly, your reasons for considering this are turnover leading to two-thirds of the commission changing all at once, more equitable representation across the county. Vision 2050 recommended exploring the idea and better communication between commissioners. And I think those are all good things, good reasons to consider a five-person commission. I do not think this is the right time to do it or the right way to do it, however. What I have learned from WPPA and from Thurston County is that Thurston County will be eligible for a five-person commission if the census shows that we have 300,000 people. The census is likely to show that. We don't have the data yet. WPPA recommends that the port, a port of our size, take, follow the lead of our county. The county is primarily responsible for the redistricting. And the county will probably consider the possibility of a five-member commissioner, five-member commission after they have finished this year's redistricting process. So that would come up next year. The county has the expertise and the resources to do this. Another concern I have with your proposal is you're on a really fast track. We would need to have a proposal by August. We have neither the resources nor the expertise to do that. So while I agree that a five-member commission is a great idea for a lot of reasons, we should not be the ones doing it and now is not the time. First of all, we let the data come in from the census. Then we let the county finish the redistricting. Given the current three districts, they have to go through that. Then next year, we let them take the lead on redistricting into five seats. And what their experts come up with, the port should follow. So thanks for bringing this to us. We've heard a number of presentations. We heard one from Ariel Chavez just recently. We've heard several from WPPA and they're all consistent with what I'm telling you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Great.
Thank you. If I can go ahead now, if I may. I had a couple of questions on this and maybe Felicia can answer this, but let me start out by saying several years ago, Thurston County had a group that was interested in changing to a home rule charter, I believe it was. And it would involve being a five-commission board. And I was supportive of that concept. I was part of that discussion early on. I think it is appropriate to have that, to spread representation out over in more individuals than less. I am certainly in favor of a four, five-member port commission. I don't think that we need to follow the commission districts, although that is what we have typically done. But I believe that if I'm not mistaken, that we can establish our own districts. Is that, that's one question I have for Felicia. I don't know that for sure, but I believe that's the case. So if you want to answer that first, go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner. Essentially, in deciding to go to five and having the five districts, the commissioners have the authority and ability under the RCW to decide to do that and then draw its own boundaries for the five districts.
Okay, thank you. And with the census being current, I think this is the right time because we'll have adequate and accurate, somewhat accurate numbers on the exact population of this county. And therefore, dividing up into five districts, we can get equal representation or populations in each one of those five districts. The other question I had is that while it is, all we're doing now is the proposed resolution to add it to the election coming up here in November. We have, already have election expenses with two people running. It's going to be more than it would normally be in another two years or a year from now, whenever that is. I can't remember exactly, but. So I think that if we put another ballot measure on the, the cost of the election expenses to the port would not be that much greater than what it is. It will be a little bit of a change. The other pro, question I have for Felicia is if we go to a five-member commission, one of the things that's always kind of made it difficult for me to understand is why there are other port commissions and they have six-year terms. So the turnover is every two years, there's one or two that, that change over. So the, the timing of changing over isn't as drastic as when you have a three-member board and two change over. So I was wondering, is there any, and, and it was explained to me, it has, goes back in history that we had to concede that for some reason way back when. And I'm just wondering if these, if we do add two individuals, can they be six-year terms? I don't know the answer to that.
So Commissioner, that was the one thing that I was like, not 100% about, not because I don't understand what the RCW says, but it's really hard to apply. And so essentially, the immediate answer to your question is I need to check and confirm what the RCW says. But the longer answer is that the RCW actually gives a different, if you will, equation for how to determine who gets what length of term and what they get initially. And so it's, at one point, we sketched it out. It's a little bit hard to understand it, but the RCW does provide when it's six years, when it's four years and in some instances, when it starts off as two.
Okay, thank you. So that would all be clarified as we move on, but, but in any event, I think the other thing is too, that there's only two ways to change it. One is through the election process and putting a resolution out there for the, the people to decide. Or the people can decide they want to put it on the ballot. I think we need to be out in front and ask the individuals in our communities. If they want to go to a five-member board, then I think that that's the direction we need to move. If it comes back and it fails and it doesn't pass, and I assume it's just a majority vote, there's no 60-40 or any of that kind of stuff. So I think that we need to offer it up and I think the time is appropriate. And I certainly would be in favor of moving something forward. Commissioner Zeta is right. The timeline is short. I think we have three, three meetings between now and August 3rd or 4th, whatever that date was. But there's nothing to say we can't have special meetings on and take action on items specifically. If we publish the agenda appropriately and within the timelines required, that we couldn't have a special meeting to make sure we get it in before that deadline occurs, rather than waiting until we take action, maybe at a regular work session. But highlight that as something specifically to work on. So I'm, I'm definitely for it. If we decide to move on, I don't know how we're going to do that unless we put it on the agenda. And I, not trying to put a piece of action on the agenda. I have to leave that up to the executive director and the commission per chair. But I would be for moving something forward in the very near future.
Thanks. Just second, Commissioner Zeta, may I respond to Commissioner McGregor a little bit? A couple of things. One is the, yes, indeed, the six-year term would have made quite a bit of sense for our port because then we could have an election every two years and, and turnover commissioners in a more relaxed fashion, you might say. I did research that and, and even Frank Schmellick, in my conversation with him, he named the person who created that problem. I'm not, without researching it further, I don't think we can go back to six-year terms. And so that would be the easy solution to today's issue, in my opinion, or that would solve part of the problem. I do think that this November 3rd is a good election to have this because the bigger the ballot, ballot, voter's pamphlet, the less share one ballot measure makes. ballot, voter's pamphlet, the less share one ballot measure makes. So we do have two port commissioners plus what we have a lot of city councilors and so forth. So the November election is a really good election to, for the port to incur that additional cost. Also, as far as the slide that Felicia showed that saying that we didn't budget for this, well, it's hard to budget for it when it's it's just hard to budget for it because first it has to be approved by the commission and then the RCW doesn't let you wait a whole year into, once you approve it, you, it doesn't let you wait a whole year up until the, into the next year to actually effectuate the ballot measure on the ballot, general ballot. So appreciate your support, Commissioner McGregor. And then Commissioner Zeta, a quick comment is that, you know, I hope we can, you know, together encourage staff to just create the resolution so that we can take it to a commission meeting and have that public comment, which is so important, assuming people care about this issue and are willing to weigh in. I know that I've heard, just since the pamphlet went out, the packet went out, got a few phone calls and both electeds and non-electeds have, have positions about this issue. But, you know, I can only go by what's true for Port of Olympia and what the RCW, you know, allows us to do. So, and that's why, you know, I'm accordingly motivated. Commissioner Zeta?
I have two questions. One is, what's the hurry? And two is, how much is this going to cost? We have the county auditor with a whole staff with the expertise and the budget to do this kind of thing, and they're prepared to do this next year. Why are we taking this on and we don't have a budget for it? You two commissioners recently voted to forego the expertise of another community partner and hire somebody to interpret DES's draft EIS on the capital A to shoot's, to shoot's estuary planning process when they have the crack team that is available to advise us for free. I don't understand this commission's, why this commission is going rogue on these things instead of working with our community partners who have the expertise and the budget to do these things. And we're spending money we haven't even budgeted for to do things that we are not staffed for. I don't understand. We don't have the money. We don't have the staff. And what's the hurry?
Well, I'll respond to that, Commissioner Zeta, to your two questions. What's the hurry? I feel like the, the three of us with our, going on six years of time together, have the institutional knowledge to make the best decision. So I'm dependent on the two of you as opposed to being dependent on whoever gets elected this fall and, and your replacements. And so I have no knowledge of these people or a little knowledge of the people, but no knowledge of how they feel about this position. So I feel like, you know, it's really, I think that we, I mean, in keeping with my idea about institutional knowledge and continuity of the organization, I feel like this important decision falls on our shoulders. And as far as the redistricting cost, I mean, yes, according to RCW, if the voters do approve it, then we have five months to complete the redistricting. And by then, in another two months, we'll know if there can be any cost sharing between us and the county commission because, you know, they'd be interested if, in fact, the census comes back and says we're over 300,000 and they won't be interested if we're not. So there is that possibility for cost sharing of the actual redistricts, redistricting work. And, and I guess if I were the county commissioner or the executive director over there, I would say there's some benefit to this cost sharing. And it would benefit, certainly benefit the community if the county commission and the port districts were exactly contiguous, if that's the right word. So.
There certainly would be a benefit to the cost sharing in a lot of ways if we would wait and do this with the county.
Well, my last comment is I think the timing is right. I think we need to put it out there and let the citizens decide where we want to go. If it gets turned down, then, then, then it gets turned down and we've had an answer. But I think we need to go out and ask the question and not be afraid of what the answer is.
Not afraid of what the answer is. I just think we're doing the process wrong. The county's the expert. And we haven't even been through the 2021 redistricting, so. I think it's, I think it's premature and I think it is using resources unwisely. We should use these resources next year and cooperate with the county.
Sam, did you have a comment?
You're muted.
You would think after all these months, you'd, we'd have that down to unmute. So it sounds like the majority of the, the, the commission is wishing to, to move forward. I do want, and I will work with the chair, Commissioner Downing, on the timing of this. I do want to set the expectations accordingly as to what staff can accomplish. And certainly, we can provide the financial analysis on the, the, the cost of the ballot proposition this year, which in speaking with Auditor Hall, those will be minimal because we already have two, two candidates on. So shouldn't be too much for that. We'll, of course, be able to then estimate, should we, should the voters approve it and move to five commissioners, what those additional costs, costs would be. We'll be able to put numbers to that. What I don't know that we will be able to accomplish here in the, the very near future is what is the cost of the redistricting itself? And in speaking with Auditor Hall, she said that, you know, we would likely need to hire a consultant to, to do that. Nobody that, that I have spoken with really has an idea of what, what that cost will be. And I think that it is really uncertain whether there'd be any opportunity for, for cost sharing with, with, with the county. So that's, that's just to let you know, there's some uncertainty to, to be addressed in the financial analysis. And given the, the short timeframe, I don't know how effectively staff can address that last piece.
Maybe I missed something. The executive director just laid out a plan of action and I didn't hear the commission take a motion or a vote.
No, that, that is true. I was saying if, if the, the, the commission decides to, to, to move forward. I was just bringing up the, the fact, the issue of how much staff work we'll be able to accomplish on this timeframe.
My comment was directed to the commission.
I assume, and I'm going to assume something, that once we get this in November and it is on the ballot, if it is on the ballot after our discussion, that we will have then four months from that time in order to complete the redistricting information. That will be a budget item for next year. That'll show up on the budget. So by then, you will have a better idea on what the cost is going to be and it'll be a line item in our budget for that purpose, if that's not correct. Or if that is correct, I believe.
Commissioner McGregor, you, you are correct. This is something that we would budget for 2022, to, to put that in the, the, the commission's budget. The, they only said, I, I don't know how much that, that, that is going to be. So I would just like to be able to provide that, that number, at least a ballpark estimate on, on that number, and I just don't have that.
No, I, I understand. That would be what it would be, a ballpark number, because until we've, I mean, we have to find out whether the people want to do this or not. Once that's done, then the next step is to do the redistricting. And if, if it gets turned down and defeated at the, at the ballot box, then there's no, no harm, no foul at that point because the money that we've already put in there for a budget moving forward, which should be approved by the end of November. So we should have an idea whether even need a line item on that because the budget won't, will not be approved by that time. So anyway, I am strongly for this. I think it's the right thing to do and I think it's the right time. Thank you.
Like to make a motion, Commissioner McGregor?
Say again, I'm sorry, I.
Never mind. Thank you, though. I moved to request staff to prepare a resolution in support of a five-person commission for the commission's consideration at a near-term commission meeting.
I offer an amendment to the, to that proposal.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would amend that proposal to bring forth a budget on expected costs before we approve that.
So it's been, the, the motion's been amended to require a, a budget be brought forth for our consideration before this resolution. Is there a second?
Could I ask a question before I second or whatever? I mean, before I.
You can second for purposes of discussion.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that then for purposes of discussion. And my question is, what election costs are you talking about, Commissioner?
Whatever costs are associated with whatever Commissioner Downing is proposing.
Well, well, I think what I heard was, we're not going to know what the election, we look, we're going to get an idea of what election costs are in November, but we're not going to get a, an inkling yet on what the redistricting costs are. So I want to be very clear of what you're talking about as election costs.
Election costs, that includes anything we have to pay the county, our staff time, and if we have to pay a consultant.
I think the point is well-taken and the fact that, that what we need, Sam, I think, is a resolution plus your best guess. You know, some of these are going to be good estimates, like the cost of putting a ballot measure on the November ballot. And some of them are going to be a little, perhaps might have to be a money range, like 50 to 75,000, for example, for the actual cost of redistricting. So we have, but we have a, a meeting a week from now and then we have another meeting three weeks from now. And it, there's no law against you putting forth some numbers at next Monday's meeting and then revising those numbers with additional information in two weeks. And so I moved that. We, we request staff to bring the resolution forward, supporting a five-person commission as well as preparing as detailed as possible estimates of ballot measure cost, redistricting costs, and future five-person commission costs.
So is that the motion that, that I seconded?
It's a new motion. So I, I've accepted Commissioner Zeta's suggestions and I made a new motion. Let me repeat. I moved that we request staff to prepare a resolution in support of a five-person commission for the commission's consideration as well as as detailed as possible cost estimates of the ballot measure, the redistricting, and the ongoing incremental five-person commission costs.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I have to say, I'm amazed that you are fast-forwarding this suggestion. You wanted to come to us at the next meeting and this commission would not approve putting Juneteenth on the next commission meeting. This tells us a lot about this commission's priorities.
Thanks, Commissioner Merzita. Let me just re, perhaps correct you slightly, which is a week from Monday would be an advisory and two weeks after, two weeks from next Monday, i.e. three weeks from now, would be an action item. That's what I envision. So that's totally normal process.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes our agenda for today and, and action-packed work session. Thank you for your flexibility today and running, we ran over a little bit. So without further ado, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.